All right, here we go. It is six o'clock and I call the September 12th, 2023 City Commission Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hattasol.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our work session item for this evening is the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan Update.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Schmeele. I'm a senior planner in the Community Development Department of the City of Manhattan. And tonight we're giving you an update on the Beyond Tomorrow Downtown Plan. I believe the last time we came to the commission was in late April or early May with an update for you then. So this is just kind of where we're at in the process. So we are at the point where we are getting into some development strategies and some pre-planning. So we'll talk through a little bit about what that means. But we've done our research, had a very thorough community outreach campaign, which brings us to where we are tonight. A little bit on that community outreach, it was broken up into two phases. The first of which included a community and business survey. We gathered about eighteen hundred responses from our community survey, getting a good cross-section of the community, asking them just about of questions about how they interact with downtown and what they would like to see happen down there in the future. We also partnered up with DMI and sent surveys to business owners as well and got about fifty-two responses there. Stage two included more in-person engagement with different stakeholders. The list here just tells you how many stakeholders were identified and engaged throughout the summer. That took a few different forms, which included either one-on-one conversations, like at the farmer's market, to small group presentations with non-government organizations, focus groups with cohorts of the community, and also a lot of fun mapping exercises. We have a good stack of maps in our office, just getting down and dirty with those groups, drawing on maps and really getting an idea of the community vision for downtown. All of this was wrapped up into a background report, the first draft of which was included in your packet. That just condenses all of the information we got from our research and data analysis, as well as that community and stakeholder input, broken down into different planning topics. Here's a kind of a summary that's included in the beginning of the background report. We did what's called an AdVO analysis, which is advantages, disadvantages, vulnerabilities, and opportunities with all of these planning topics and just broke them down by the top for each one of those items. This was vetted along with the draft background report with our technical and steering committee, who largely, yeah, was in agreement with with our analysis here, which then allowed us to dip our toes into the development strategy phase. With a plan, with any area plan, there's sort of two aspects to it. There's the more policy aspects of the plan, and then there's the development strategy plan, which is trying to respond to those community visions that we garnered from the community and our stakeholders to address some issues in a meaningful way. So this is, you know, largely what what kind of change would you actually physically like to see downtown? So a development plan is pretty high level. It looks at things like building mass, land use, site qualities, streetscape, and parking, and generally looks at a twenty to twenty-five year timeline. So this is the planned study area, which you've seen before. And these are the areas that sort of came up very frequently throughout our engagement process. Not a lot to say about the North End and South End. Those are relatively recent redevelopments. And the historic core, a lot of good streetscape improvements and revitalization happening there. It's a historic district. So a lot of the conversations focused on these areas in orange, which I'm going to go through a little bit with you. So Area A here is the West Leavenworth Corridor, outside of the, you know, core of downtown, but a lot of opportunities to potentially see that as a place to increase our number of housing units in and near downtown. Less emphasis on retail, more emphasis perhaps on office and uses that would be more supportive of the downtown core. Area B, West Humboldt, similar vision from the community there, seen as maybe a more transitional area where maybe we could support additional retail, commercial, but a greater emphasis on office and residential, with kind of seeing the opportunities for the county complex and how, you know, we could build off of that as an anchor for that corridor. West Points, really looking at what are the opportunities to extend the Main Street feel of the three hundred and four hundred block of points? There's a lot of gaps along that corridor, a lot of inactive uses. So a lot of folks wanted to see that sort of livelihood maybe pushed a little bit further west. Area D, this is west of the Conference Center. This is just kind of a mixed area, a lot of different uses, a lot of different forms. There was a strong desire to see that maybe transition to more uses that could be supportive of the Conference Center as a regional destination, including, you know, retail, commercial, office, and residential, but, you know, kind of tapering off toward the west as we get closer to that more historic neighborhood. Area E, this is kind of the largest area outside of the existing downtown core. So this is an area that the community saw potential to actually extend more urban fabric, transitioning some of those highway industrial commercial uses immediately adjacent to Fort Riley Boulevard. We're currently in the middle of a brownfield study of this area that will help us create some more some more concepts for that area, as well as some more intense public engagement, since that might be an area of greater change. Area F, the Third Street Corridor, this is a was mentioned quite a lot, just the the idea that there's a pretty significant disconnect between the North End, the downtown core, and the South End, a lot of parking lots and kind of inhospitable pedestrian environment along that corridor. What are opportunities to improve the streetscape, as well as fill in some of those gaps so that it's more seen as one whole district? And lastly, east of the mall, we couldn't get away with not addressing the mall in this plan. More to come on that, but the just vast amount of underutilized parking on the east side, the community really thought that there could maybe be some additional development there that could really kind of prop up the mall and make it more of a even more integrated into the into the downtown area. So all of these kind of ideas, we've started thinking of ways to engage the public with. We did a couple of kind of trial runs with our steering and technical committee, creating these Lego models to kind of demonstrate what at scale development could look like throughout the downtown in different contexts. We have an example over here on the podium, if you'd like to take a look after the meeting. But really being able to communicate to the the community what change could look like from a use and kind of a form standpoint. So we've started kind of vetting those concepts throughout the the community in that regard. And the hope is for a development strategy that, once we've kind of got a sound massing model and use model created, that we would then be able to turn that into more accessible versions that would then live in a planning document as a, you know, a three D model, similar to what we've done in the Aggieville community vision. So that's kind of the development strategies phase. Again, there's a policy side that would be then created throughout the rest of this fall and be wrapped in to the final planning document with those development strategies that would hopefully be adopted by the end of, by the beginning of of spring 2024. Any questions for me?
Just random questions as I went through. How would you compare your community outreach on this and the community outreach and input that you received from the Aggieville vision? I was very familiar with the Aggieville vision. I came to almost every one of your sessions. And I haven't, I've come to a couple of these, but they're totally different. And I just wondered how if you, how would you compare the two?
Yeah, the community survey got less interest on the downtown plan than we did with Aggieville. Aggieville, we received around forty-five hundred surveys back, this one about eighteen hundred. The with Aggieville, there was a lot shorter of a list of identified stakeholders, property owners, business owners. We're finding with downtown, it's just a lot more expansive. It's a physically larger area. There's more diversity in businesses and institutions and community interests. So it's significantly broader, I would say, than Aggieville. We've engaged hundreds of people over the summer in person. And, yeah, I we've never done something this this wide in breadth since I've been here.
Okay. In the little called the analysis summary table, you've mentioned, the third one is land use redevelopment and recreation. But I find very little in the materials about what recreation, other than the mention of open space. And, you know, that's pretty vague. So what by what recreation? Are you just talking about walking on sidewalks? Or are you really talking about any substance of, like, is the block? I didn't see that the block where the municipal court, that block, is included in this. So that's not recreation for this purpose. So I was trying to envision where recreation is specifically.
Yeah.
I'd say one of the things from our last meeting when we went around the concrete plant there was a lot to do with the linear trails and those other trails going down was, you know, talked about and trying to get ways to link other parts of town to there so people could use it. Because the people who are visiting often ask, well, is there a trail or is there stuff to do?
But and that's up the ramp up to the levee and getting across the highway. But this, my question is more about the the part of the map where we're anyway, the northern, more not the extreme south, because the extreme south is even barely in this study.
Yeah, the the conversation about recreation is mostly, as Commissioner Mata talked about, has been about connections to linear trail. There's a strong desire to see those connections better made. It's very difficult to get there from downtown. There's a there's a handful of dedicated green spaces throughout downtown. That that's kind of an issue. We see there's not really a centralized green space that, you know, you can go to. But you're right, that being a downtown, that's where the sidewalk network and the streetscape and the environment sort of become a recreational activity. So really seeing the streetscape as almost a form of of recreation, getting to walk through those spaces.
Will the mall plaza, as it's reconstituted, as I see it now, anybody can walk there and, you know, gather whatever. In the future, are you going to be more controlling of it as you redo it? Or is it so that you have to make a reservation and pay? Or is it going to be as usable, easily used as other spaces?
Yeah, certainly the the improvements are seen as positive, raising it up and making it more usable. I don't think we'll get into specifics on on programming like that. But it will be, it is identified as an asset.
Would it be under Parks and Rec or would that be a mall scheduling or customer service at City Hall or?
We just initiated that contract with BBN. So I would anticipate them hosting a kickoff meeting soon. We'll bring those concepts and questions and topics back to you all eventually. The way it's used today and the way we've talked about it in the future, not a great change. But clearly, the high school hosts prom down there and they reserve it and use it.
Right.
Community type event like that. I think DMI has some ideas on outdoor type of performances and integrating it into their Third Thursdays. So, yeah, I think the city controlling it, even today, mall efforts and city efforts are both in that park. And I would anticipate that would continue.
Because I think the prom things are inside because it's usually cold weather.
Well, the parade, they do a little parade in and they use that area.
Yeah, okay.
But to clarify that, that property belongs to the city.
Correct.
Okay, and the mall does not control it.
They do not.
The mall parking on the east side, and we've talked about that for years, I think, and the potential for an outlying business along the highway. How do you call it? I guess Tuttle Creek Boulevard is what we call it in through there. Are there other changes to the mall that that are envisioned? And I'm thinking about, I I can see that the mall could be interested in redeveloping internally. That is not something that would be a financial burden to the city.
Yeah, the the conversation around the mall is, it's been
I know we helped them with that little sales tax to help them renovate some of the common spaces. But as far as helping fund major mall improvements, that's not our burden for rather a private owner.
Context of a CID you were.
Yeah, the internal improvements, Commissioner referenced with the sales taxes, the CID. And they've made a substantial number of improvements so far. We haven't been approached by mall ownership to do anything else. I think mall management has been encouraging the steering committee to think broadly and big, long-term type of scenarios and situations for that property. So I think the feedback you've received during some of your sessions, people have went down some paths that are, you know, quite a bit different than what's there today.
I just wonder, as we, as you formulate the plan, what and I have another question, but I can't read my notes, so. While somebody else is, while somebody else is talking, I'll try to figure out what that note is.
Is there, there's already another unbuilt on outlot there on the east side, right? There's at least one?
Not that I'm aware of.
There is one that they have control of. There's an additional one we thought they might establish with, but they haven't yet. So there's one just south of AMC that we've always anticipated they would do, but it's not formally designated that way.
Okay, and and that's not really anything that would be included in this planning in particular, because that's their
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And and that's been something we've kind of had to be careful about. We we recognize that, you know, there's autonomy there. We can't just put anything we want in a plan and expect it to happen or anything like that. So they've been, like Jason said, they've been a great partner in all of this. They've encouraged us to kind of dream about the possibilities there. They really see this as an opportunity to have additional options in the future when it comes to, you know, how their their retail model works. And, you know, and and they're not being strong-armed into anything by any means. But they really, once we sit down with them and start talking about, well, you know, what could happen here or there, they they get pretty excited about the possibilities.
Very good.
Are they easier to work? I mean, I remember the reason we have this division between the north. What do we call it?
Redevelopment area?
Redevelopment area and the south redevelopment area is because they refused to let us open the parking area there on Leavenworth, as I recall. And kind of like the railroad, it kind of holds things up.
Yeah.
So are they easier to work with these days? Is that what you're saying?
They are. It's new ownership and different management. So you're you're dealing with a whole new cast of individuals. And I would echo Ben's comments, and I I think Commissioner Butler and Mata have been part of that group. And Simonsen has been there and expressed a willingness to look at the the property in a lot of different ways. Brad Simonsen, the mall manager.
Have you got more? More presentation?
No, that was it.
Oh, well, many other questions for Ben? Otherwise, we'll turn it open for public comment and then we'll chat some more if anything else comes to mind here. Thank you, Ben. If anybody would care to comment on this downtown plan, please come forward and state your name. You've got five minutes. Okay, no other public comment. Commissioners, what else are you thinking about?
I mean, this is one I'm on, so I've been going to these meetings. I think the staff's done a really good job, like the Legos things that we went through. But a lot of it really, if you sum it up, is obviously going up, building up, trying to get the density, trying to make it nicer, what he said with the walking and putting some green space in to connect things. Some things with parking, some parking garages and some different places. That being said, that was one of the things that came up, is you look to those Legos and they're starting to tower over the streets and you don't have the regulations there where you have to provide the the parking. It did bring to mind, do we have enough parking or what would the traffic really be like in some of these places if we were to do it? And then the the last one was where we were going around the concrete plant. And of course, you know, there's all sorts of ideas if that plant goes away, that you can do it. But obviously, if it's there, it's going to be more challenging. But even then, whatever the plan is, to actually do it, you need people to decide to sell and develop and build and everything else. So it's, you know, really just a kind of a guideline to get things going. But I think the process has been good.
I've attended several, and I think that people are generally pleased. I just want to be sure that we don't arrive at at the opposition that we got from Aggieville after we adopted it and it was on the last meeting that where our adoption was final. I think it happened twice, the last vote. And suddenly the room was full of people. It's like, where were you? And I don't, I just think that creates tension that isn't necessary. And I'm trying to figure out what the formula is so that we don't do that.
And if I could add, we've, in addition to what we've kind of done this summer, we do have a few more public outreach opportunities coming up in the future. We'll be sitting down with property owners. We'll have a couple of listening sessions later on this month. And the final Third Thursday in October, we'll have an open house format where we'll go over some concepts and really be able to have an open dialogue with the community.
I know you're working with the Downtown Manhattan Incorporated Group, and they are not here tonight, so they must be pretty pleased.
They've been great.
It's a good sign when nobody's here.
John Versu has been wonderful in working with them.
This is a lot of work and presented in a very positive way. And I just want to be sure that we're we're going to go forward as positive as, keep it positive, so. So thank you for this. I, it's well put together. I would like to visit with Ben maybe afterwards. I've got something I'd like to show you.
I just want to make two quick comments. One, you know, there's some concern about MCM. I know you got the riverfront guys, and it looks to me like people want to move MCM out of there. You know, basically, let's get rid of our concrete plant, which is one of our major companies, so we can develop that area. Sort of like, you know, that Brownsville study that was done over there by the car museum, where the guys that own the property were totally out of sync with the conclusion. So I'm a little bit concerned about that. I mean, you know, upfront, somebody needs to, you know, make that clear. Is the idea to move MCM, to try to twist their arm and get them out of there? Or is the idea, let's forget about trying to, you know, put something there with the levee and a concrete plant? That's that's one issue. You don't need to answer that because I know that's an impossible one to try to answer.
And then, actually, it does give kind of an answer, because didn't you say they, MCM was very open to looking at the different ideas and let you do it?
Part of the part of the brownfield study that we're doing in that area, like you mentioned, Commissioner, was doing a little bit of planning effort there on what's considered a catalyst site. MCM has volunteered their property to be a catalyst site. So they've they've allowed us to dream a little bit with their property specifically, thinking about how it could, you know, potentially spur on other development opportunities and when thinking about supporting supportive uses of the Conference Center area, as well as the riverfront recreational opportunities there.
That's interesting. I just, I just know we had conflict over the rezoning. You know, the fact that they wanted that vacant lot and they owned another piece of land there. And people were saying MCM was going to eat up Potawatomi Avenue. And it just, it looks to me like, as Commissioner Morris said, we got some serious, you know, conflict there. And I don't really know what the answer is. I
We see that process as We see that process as a real opportunity to hear all of those voices and kind of iron out a more solid plan for that area. We had a couple of listening sessions with property owners just this past week in the Potawatomi Avenue area. And, you know, once we started talking about ideas for this area, it turned positive real quickly. So we're hopeful for getting a plan that addresses that area in a way that is, you know, more amicable to to everyone involved.
Okay, and then the other thing, the other comment was, you know, you have that section there on, you know, biking and walkability, and it has transit sort of in there, but no real in-depth discussion. And I've always thought that a big part of this plan should include an inner-city, you know, trolley service to connect, you know, Aggieville, the downtown, everything as part of it. And then that's a solution to this this parking issue, because we'll have parking garages at at either end. And of course, my concept, just looking back in the early days of Manhattan, we actually had a trolley system
I know, Moro.
You know, was on, that was on rails and electrified. But it would be interesting to, you know, explore the concept of getting, you know, a couple of unique trolleys. And I actually looked up some, you know, online. You can you can buy things that look like the old-time trolleys, but they operate on gas. Or you can get them electric. I mean, I don't know what the feasibility is of of having an electric inner-city, you know, trolley system. But but it probably would work because it's only going to cover maybe three miles, you know, so it's not going to be a range issue. Might be a charging issue. But but I'd like to see that explored, because if if you're really going to connect all this, you know, that would be a big thing. And I did speak with ATA about it. They were going to do some investigations on the different things, on trolleys and federal grants to to get money to support that. And I I think that would be a very excellent ingredient as part of this because it will tie all the businesses together. And then maybe we'll have to hear people cry about how hard it is to get anywhere. They could park at either end and we'd have a trolley system which would be free, you know, maybe funded through economic development or whatever. And I'd like to see that expanded a little bit more. But other than that, I think we're doing well.
Okay, thank you.
I would just mention too that the Flint Hills Regional Council is funding the the brownfield study. And that is significant. And it will benefit our, this development. It's my understanding that the owner is very cooperating, very much cooperating with the brownfield study. He's not necessarily not making a commitment to move, but he's interested in knowing the status of the land that he owns. And it's, so that's, I just wanted to mention, when is always critical of the Flint Hills Regional Council. So this is a product, and it's a significant one, this contract with Stantec, I think.
Yeah.
And that, is it completed or is it underway?
It's underway. It's underway.
Underway, I think. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think they probably be willing to move for twenty million dollars and some new land somewhere that they got free or something.
Yeah.
It's one, yeah, it's one, I'm sure they, they're trying to be a good neighbor and leave the option open. And if, if there is some kind of a star bond district equivalency of some kind, that there'd be a pile of money that could buy them out for twenty million bucks and relocate them. I think there's probably places they'd rather be than right there. It's just when you have that much investment and capital in one location, yeah, they're not gonna pack that up and go somewhere else without some compensation for sure. So. All right, John, Stephanie, you wanna focus on anything else you forgot to talk about? What a deal, what a deal. The bosses are happy. Okay, well, I think we'll wrap up that work session item. We will move into the city manager briefing. Ron, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, Commissioners. Good to be here. A couple of things to go over. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. I know in Thursday's mail folder, you were provided the spreadsheet of all the folks, I think there are about twenty-five, that had applied to be on the Seco Park Improvement Advisory Committee. And I wanted to talk about the appointment process. I had originally wanted to do this at the last briefing session, but that was the meeting, the work session, we had to extend to go over our ending time and y'all wanted to get out of there. So anyway, I wanted to just bring up kinda the process. You know, we've, we've built in some kind of automatic appointments to this. I believe two Park and Rec Advisory Board members were selected last night to be appointed from the Park and Rec Advisory Board. I think there's USD 383 appointment as well. Also, someone, we've asked for someone from Riley County and someone from Visit Manhattan Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, and then we have up to ten at-large members that are suggested to be appointed. And I just wanted to kinda confirm that process with you of, does the mayor want to make the selections or do the commissioners wanna give some, their suggestions for some folks for the mayor to consider off of the spreadsheet that was provided? We've kinda done that in the past. We also provided kind of a geographic map of where those folks reside, which I think can, can help that from that perspective. So I just kinda wanted to get that conversation going and get some feedback from you about follow the traditional mayor appointment process with feedback from, but with some direct feedback from Commissioners.
I'd like to follow that process. I think it worked well on that last, I don't remember what it was, but we have done it several times successfully.
I'd be okay with giving me some ideas of who your top eight or nine people or something and then see who, what some of the common ones are and then try to fill in the blanks of geographic, socioeconomic, somehow fill in the gaps that the original list might not include. So, yep, there you go.
All right. So Commissioners then, if you
I'm not clear what the process is. So how many people are we appointing?
Is it ten? Up to ten?
Yes, ten would be the max.
Okay, so, so what you want us to do is
Plus the automatics.
each of us make a list of our ten nominations and send them to you?
Well, seven.
Well,
Seven? Okay.
Seven or eight. That way, otherwise you'll end up with
All right, we'll, we'll go with seven and then we'll send them to you and then you can pick
So we aren't, we aren't asking people to apply on our
They've already had the opportunity.
We've done that. Okay. All right, good. We'll, I think that's good.
So that list is online, so we can pull the, in the packet?
It was in your Thursday mail folder. It's also been dropped into the advisory committee
Okay.
area.
And then, what's the date you need that?
You wanna try to do it next Tuesday already?
No, originally, we had picked that date, but that, that deadline's tomorrow. So that wouldn't be practical. So we would shoot by October fifth, so if you could have, basically by the end of this month.
Okay.
That would be, or October third, excuse me. So actually, we would need it a week prior to that. So that would be
Next Friday.
Yeah, there you go.
What'd you say?
So you're gonna need, you're gonna need the information sooner to that to make the decision?
Well, no. Get it, get it to the city by next Friday. I'll ponder it over the weekend and come up with a list and
Okay.
Yeah, that packet'll go out the twenty-eighth, so anything around the twenty-fifth, twenty-six is fine. That prior Friday is probably twenty-third.
Okay, send it to you by the twenty-third. And who do we send that to? City clerk?
Yeah, keep it coming through our office, so then we can convey it back to Mark.
Okay, can do. Got it.
Thank you. Appreciate working through that.
And then similarly, we have the, right now, we're out asking folks that might be interested in the Move MHK Advisory Committee or Steering Committee to, I think Aaron told me, they maybe have close to twenty folks that have interested in that as well. And so I assume you'll wanna follow a similar process. Once we have that list, then we would provide that to you and y'all could make similar recommendations. Does that make sense? And we could figure out the numbers relative to once we see what the applicant pool is like.
That'd be fine.
Yes, that's fine with me, sure. What about, is there a commissioner gonna serve on that committee at all? Did you plan that or not?
So we have
I'm just asking.
We hadn't planned on it. You know, we've had y'all, part of the committee to select the consultants, but we hadn't, you know, there will be periodic updates to the commissions, to the commission throughout the process. And so that would be our preference to not have a commissioner that would serve on that committee, 'cause you'll all get the information kinda equally.
I just know we all have felt the pressure of, and would say that this is really important going forward, that this works. So, okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, thanks for that feedback. I wanted to just let you know that the health educator position at Riley County, that we met with the Riley County Commission and the Potawatomi County Commission at the last City-County-County meeting, that task force formed by the Riley County Health Department has been meeting and actually meets tomorrow. So I plan to have a further update and they're developing some scenarios to assist with funding. They're also still waiting to hear if they're successful in some of their grant requests. And so look for an update coming to you soon. I anticipate that that might come back to a City-County-County meeting with some recommendations of how we move forward. My understanding is they're kinda looking at kind of a short-term plan that would fund positions through, through the end of the year and then maybe more of a long-term plan as well. So just wanted to kinda give you an update on where that was and where that might be going. Speaking of joint City-County-County meetings, we do have one on September twenty-first. And we have an item scheduled, at least one item scheduled so far, to get a update from Jerry Lonergan at the Flint Hills Regional Council. That, some things they're doing, he is retiring from that position and wanted to provide an overall update on the things that they've kind of accomplished and some of the key things that they're working on going forward. There's an intergovernmental meeting on September twenty-fifth. There is a chamber-sponsored Good Morning Manhattan where Dr. Marshall Stewart, the Executive Vice President and KSU Chief of Staff is presenting. So if you haven't been responding to that, you might think about that. There's still time if you wanna go to the League Kansas Conference on October seventh through the ninth to register. If you're interested in that, let us know. And then there's a Flint Hills Discovery Center First Look Reception, but you need to, if you wanna attend, you need to RSVP by September eighteenth. And with that, I'll look at the briefing session, or excuse me, the planning chart. Okay, looking at the upcoming meeting on the nineteenth. We have a public hearing to vacate a final plat out in the Prairie Village at the Highlands. That's kinda out in the northwest part of the community. Also, we have a couple of general agenda items, one for the animal shelter, Animal Shelter Operations Services Contract, and also a presentation and potential adoption of the ADA Transition Plan. So working forward for adopting that plan relative to the previous discussions that we've had and worked since then. One of the things that we have listed on the consent agenda is the second reading of the budget. So items, basically, one A and B. I think there's maybe some more than that, but several items related to the budget, the CIP, also different aspects of the budget with the water and wastewater rates, the stormwater rates, and the salary ordinance, which are traditional, traditionally we've done when we've had consideration of the budget. We also have a grant agreement for the National Park Service Grant. Actually, it's a resolution to apply for that down at the Douglas Center Annex. We've been fairly successful in working at some of those. That advisory committee appointment will come off and move to the third. We have the ordinance second reading for that Common Consumption Area for the Downtown Event that's upcoming in October. We have the elevator agreement for maintaining and servicing all of the city's elevators in the community. And then we have a RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for a task grant that the Flint Hills Discovery Center has received. And they'll be, we're stepping into the prairie to start that process. Again, that's, I believe that's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant and there's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar matching contribution by the Flint Hills Discovery Center Foundation that's driving that. And then we also have an agreement for the Move MHK consultant selection. So anticipate having that agreement with the team that's gonna be leading that effort. And it could be that that timing may allow for both of those committees to be appointed on the third. We'll just kinda have to wait and see how that process works relative to that. The, are you getting feedback like I am?
Nope.
Nope, good. On the October third, kind of a, several general agenda items. We've got first reading of a rezoning on the eleven-oh-five Kretschmer Drive. This is our construction of the
Spec Building?
Spec Building, there you go. That's what I was looking for. Out there behind McCall Pattern, the zoning designation for that is relatively old. And so we wanna make sure that what they wanna do in that spec building meets with the zoning. So that'll be coming after all these items are on the Planning Board Meeting Thursday night, so this Thursday night. Also, an annexation rezoning of the Henry Edition, that's out in the northwest area of Cobra Hills. And then rezoning requests from the Chavies Edition, that's out in the Northview area. Some undeveloped land that they're looking at rezoning. And so that, one that will likely be of considerable interest for the community and we'll see how that goes at the Planning Board Thursday. On the consent agenda, we got the second reading of some of the budget-related ordinances that were added to the agenda relative to basically the rates and the salary, salary ordinance. And then we also have a first reading of adopting of the standard traffic ordinance. As you remember, the state always makes a number of updates and changes to the standard traffic ordinance. And then we have provisions which we adopt as well or don't adopt, depending on the nature of things. They're usually straightforward. We have some final plats out in the Stonehaven area as well as the Sergeant Edition. We have some professional service agreements on there for the design of the Sunset Zoo, African Plains and America's Habitat. So there's the agreement with the consultant that was selected. And then also a funding agreement with the Zoo Trust to help pay for those consultant services. We also have a professional services agreement to hire a team to help work and design on the Anderson Avenue improvements from K-113 to REIT. And also, and then also a consultant services agreement to help us with design on Walters Drive, basically from Tuttle Creek Boulevard East to Eisenhower roughly. We also have some recommendations for you to expand our, and to go for a request for qualifications to expand our on-call services. So this is to add additional professional services to the ones we already have for on-call, to help us, I know, one is surveying and several other areas that will help us, I think, in the future, especially since we've got to reduce staffing in our engineering division due to vacancies, losing them to other employers. So that's October third. Any questions on either of those?
Nope.
Okay, work sessions coming up then. Things are very open. We've got a number of different things that are vying for those. We just don't have them finalized enough to list them yet. But I'm pretty confident we'll be filling all of those slots, except for that fifth Tuesday on October thirty-first. We're not planning to fill that one. So there's an extra, extra Tuesday in October. And otherwise, there are several items that are pending. They're just not quite ready to bring forward yet. But I do, I am confident we'll have something for the twenty-sixth, I believe. That's all I had, Mayor.
What a deal. All right, very good. Questions, Linda?
Just, there was, I think, a recent K-Man show with the airport director. Could you review the plan for, for service to resume?
Sure. So I could make some, some comments and I can't see who else is in the room. So I don't know if Brandon's there or not, but I
He's not.
Okay.
I didn't hear it.
Okay, so things are really going well. Things have picked up with the electrical work. I know today, the FAA was here and they were doing a number of different light checks for all of the data and the sensors and all of the things, whether they work or not. I think it's gonna be another day or two before we have all those results back. But Brandon's been pretty positive about that things were moving forward and we don't think we're gonna have any issues meeting the twenty-fifth date for the airlines. He also indicated that booking after the, from the twenty-fifth is strong, very comparable to where we've been in the past. So that's a good sign. But there's a, a lot of, little bit of work, mostly testing, that's been going on. There's a little bit of final painting to be done and just a little bit, I think all of the electrical work on the main runway is complete. They just have to verify it and test it, make sure everything's running. I think they got a little bit of work to do on one of the taxiways from an electrical standpoint, but all the hydro seating's going in, so they're looking, and the sign installation. So I think he's feeling very good about where we're at and being able to open and being able to open for commercial service on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, that's good.
Possibly sooner for other things, if things test out well.
That's good news, thank you.
You bet.
John, you got anything? Nope. When?
I've got just four things to comment on. You know, one, Representative Dodson, I think, has sent us all emails about weeds. And he thinks the city should, you know, go out there and cut them down. And my thought on that is, as I drove around looking at some of these, those weeds going up through the sidewalk on Anderson, that's the responsibility of the apartment complex. It's not the city's job to cut those down. So why doesn't Code write them a ticket? You know, rather than, you know, the idea that, okay, it looks terrible as you drive in on, you know, Fort Riley Boulevard or wherever. But, but that is the responsibility of the folks that own the property. So they need to get out there with their weed eaters and cut it down. But I'm, I'm not in favor of the city spending additional money. We don't have the people or the time to do that. But, but that's something that the property owners need to be held accountable for. And then those are extreme, I mean, some of those things are like two and a half feet tall. You know, dead weeds sticking out there, right, right there on Anderson, you know, on Sunset. So that's, that's just one. The, the second one is, a couple of weeks ago, you know, Burnett Automotive contacted me about their, and I see they've got signs on the building now. Went by there today, so is that thing resolved with the ability of RCPD to tow the cars that people have been abandoning in his lot?
Ron, did you?
I know we've had discussion with RCPD about that and what, what constitutes it. I mean, it's one of those things where it is a little bit of a gray area, where you've essentially got people that have abandoned their vehicles because they can't afford to pay for it. So we have identified that there's likely does need to be some kind of change so that they would be afforded the same protection as, say, a towing company if somebody abandons a car with them, that they can take ownership of it and salvage it. So I think we're making some progress in that particular area. But I think, I think we pointed out that they didn't need as many signs as the, as they were thinking it might. And, but they, so they, they, I think they understand that the ordinance better than what it exists. And, but it's a different, it's a different circumstance than we typically face with the towing ordinance, where you just have people that have parked in an area they're not supposed to be parking and are there temporarily, as opposed to somebody who doesn't want to pay their bill because the estimate came in too high.
Yeah, I saw he put, you know, signs on his building, which I guess takes care of the ordinance, which means if they won't pay the bill and they've abandoned their car, he can have RCPD tow them, and then it's, you know, they can fight that out later in court as to who does what. And then my other comment is, as I drive around town, you know, I see all these commercial advertisements, a couple of mosquito companies and some other things. And I know that if you put a political sign in the public right away, it seems to get torn down by somebody at the city within days. But the way I'm looking at it, Mosquito Joe's may win the election, because he's got more signs out than anybody running. And, and that's just, it looks like that's getting out of control. He, he started putting those out there. Now I've noticed another mosquito company and another company, and I thought our sign ordinance said you couldn't do that. And so we need to, we need to, you know, put a kibosh on that. And then the, the last thing is, I see, Jason, you were coordinating a little meeting there with, with Dee, and I just wanted to be sure the other commissioners knew about that. And when we got that phone call last meeting, where my phone rang, that was Dee. She was concerned that Pot County was out of the loop on everything that we were doing. And she asked me to schedule a, a meeting, so I asked Jason to set that up, primarily worried about fire station, the study on Highway twenty-four, and of course, the bridge will be the issue in EMS. And it doesn't seem to fit for the county meeting, and we didn't want to notice it. So some of the staff and Dee and myself are going to meet when, when the, the city figures out the time. And I figure one other commissioner can join us, so it doesn't become an open meetings thing. But basically, it, it, the idea here is to, you know, just resolve her issues that she's got, because she feels like she's just been cut out of the loop on, on everything. And I know Ron has, has gone down there, but, you know, she was a little bit irritated about the whole thing and did not like the fact that we'd purchased the land for the fire station. And she did not like the fact that we approved the consultant to study that end. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can just, you know, put her mind at rest. That's the purpose of the meeting, but I wanted to be sure you were all aware of that.
I was the other one included with, for that meeting with Dee.
Okay, so you and I will be there for that?
Yeah, we, we asked the mayor to attend as well.
Okay, so, so that you folks are aware of that, that's what it is, and we can always brief you on.
Glad to know that.
Take, take care of the decision.
I'll take it. So, so how, surely, yeah, Spott County was in the loop when we talked about getting a consultant for East Highway twenty-four, and they signed off on that and everything.
Yes, so obviously, we didn't, we didn't ask them to participate financially. I have, in my last three updates to them, covered this particular issue and told them that we were going to embark on this study. Stephanie went over, we went through the RFP significantly, asked for questions. You know, I think there was, you know, our point of emphasis was that our plan for that committee, which obviously that process is starting to, getting ready to get started from that perspective with now that we have the agreement in place, and we'll start the, the recruitment effort for folks that want to be on that committee, which we believe should be dominated by folks that live and work in that area. So, and clearly, we've asked them at both of my last updates that we'd like county representatives. We want a county commissioner to be on that small oversight committee that will have a commissioner from this commission, a commissioner from their commission, a representative from each of their planning boards. Is Stephanie still there?
Yep.
So I, I feel like we have talked with them a lot about the scope of that particular meeting. That's going to cover all the different aspects of it. We spent a lot of time with them on that. And I understand that she may not agree with that, with certain aspects of it. I've emphasized the, the fire station, that there's a need for that with the Scorpius development. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to the meeting to see where, where they, where she believes we need to go. And it, you know, she's, she's a commissioner. And so I've indicated that we might want their administrator to attend that meeting as well.
That'd be good, I just wanted to, you know, help smooth that out so that we could eliminate as much friction as, as possible.
They're probably mad they didn't get asked to pay for part of the study, I suspect, and so.
Well, they wanted equal appointments to the committee. And, and, you know, I just didn't feel that that was appropriate since we were footing the whole bill. But I did try to emphasize that it's going to be an open selection process and that we wanted a county representative, both from a technical perspective, from their staff, which we have been with their staff in the development of that request for proposals. We provided advanced copies to the commissioners of that proposal, asked for feedback on it. We made, made changes that their staff recommended to us. So I feel like we've made a substantial effort in trying to communicate why and where we're going with that.
Okay, well then, we'll, we'll get it figured out then, so.
We'll just go above and beyond, Ron. I appreciate what you were trying to do there.
Sure.
All right, any other comments or questions or anything? Ron, any?
I don't believe so, Mayor, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn then?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn this, let's see, September twelfth meeting of the Manhattan City Commission.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, please call the roll.
Mayor Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Amada?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carried, meeting adjourned.